Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board's work session for Tuesday. I'm not sure what the date is today, March 15th. Does that sound good? 15th, 2021. The first item that we have on our agenda this evening is a joint meeting between the Town Board and our ZBA, our Zoning Board of Appeals. And so we're joined this evening by the Chair, oh, it's March 16th, March 16th, by our, by the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ken Cooper. Ken, why don't I turn it over to you and maybe if you could briefly introduce us to the Board members that you have with you this evening?
Sure, Ivy. Joining me this evening, we have Tony Giardina, Harvey Bonaparte, Michael Nolan, and Howard Dubs.
Thanks to all of you for, for joining us. So the, the Town Board has been kind of hosting on a kind of regular basis, each of our boards and commissions, who kind of just come before us to present a little bit of an overview of their sort of roles and responsibilities within the town. And then, you know, kind of to put to, put to the Town Board, any particular issues that you're having that, you know, you would like us to be able to assist with. If you've kind of, upon reflection, noticed things that we can, in our role, be helpful to you. That's, that's kind of the, the goal of these joint meetings is to figure out ways that we, as a municipality, can operate more effectively and more efficiently. So with that said, I'll kind of turn it back to you, Ken, if, if you have a, if you want to give us kind of an overview of the ZBA and any particular issues you want to raise with the Town Board.
I think Sabrina was going to jump in and, and kind of handle that for us first.
So hello, everyone. The ZBA is a little bit different than other boards and committees you've met with. It's considered a quasi judicial board. And they specifically review specifics that are taken by town officials, the building inspector, the code enforcement officer, residents. And they can grant, their main role is to grant instances or exceptions to the town code. A lot of times you may hear about people getting a side yard variance or a rear yard variance. Those are determinations made by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Another role for the Zoning Board is to offer interpretations. If somebody disagrees a determination that the building inspector, that Tom makes, the Zoning Board is that judicial entity that will determine whether or not they agree with Tom's decision or they agree with the information that the applicant is, is providing. So it's a little bit different in that they are, where other boards are responsible for implementing our codes and following the codes to the letter of the, of the book, of the law. ZBA is looking to grant exceptions to the standards within that code. Other powers as dictated to them through the special use projects as enumerated in the town code. And that kind of sums that up. The Board itself meets once a month. And they sometimes have agendas up to 25 applicants, depending on what's going on in the world at the moment. So that's kind of a nuts and bolts summary of the ZBA.
So I think over the years, we've had probably more, more interesting things to discuss than we might have this evening. You know, over the years, we've dealt with applications for the Legionaries, the mosque, Sunshine, things that took many, many different meetings, sometimes took more than one year to, to kind of reach a, a final conclusion with. More recently, perhaps something like the Mount Kisco Country Club that wanted to install a outdoor tennis dome came before us. Also, Kingfisher came before us as it related to a special use permit for the Round Rock area. And I know you now are responsible, I think, for the rock ledge application, but we initially heard that application also. Today, a typical agenda is populated by renovations that homeowners wish to make through their homes, usually involving an expansion, or the ever popular generator.
Right. And so in your experience, how, how kind of smoothly is the process running? Do people, how many sort of meetings do, do homeowners or property owners tend to appear before you before they get a sort of decision made on, on the kind of application that they put before you?
In the vast majority of cases, we're able to hear the application in one particular evening and make a determination at that same meeting. It's usually the exception where we have to carry it over to a second or third evening. That may have to do with probably comments by neighbors or landing, or adjoining landowners who may be concerned about visual impacts or, or things of that sort that require more consideration.
Are there, from, from sort of a Town Board perspective, are there any kind of processes that are built into our town code that you think that we should be looking at with regard to the ZBA's role?
Other members of the Board, do any of you have any comments in that regard?
Well, I'd like to say that I don't think there's anything major that needs to be done. Our, our meetings were run very, very smoothly. People I've spoken with all are very positive about our actions and our determinations. I think, personally, I think we have one of the better boards, one of the better zoning boards in, in the Upper Westchester area. I don't want to, I don't want to besmirch any other board, but from input that I've gotten from people out of town that know about it, say that we are always fair and always on top of it. So I, I think we're running pretty smoothly. There's nothing major that I could possibly think of that we need to do to make any changes.
I've heard that about the Town Board, too.
You must be following our lead.
I think it should be pointed out that both Tony and I learned what, whatever we have learned at the knee of Gabby Rosenfall. So we have him to thank for the people that we are today and the town that we live in.
He set a very good example. And he, he, I think he put the ZBA on the right track. And I'm very happy to continue on the vein that he has put us on.
Well said.
Well, I'll look to my fellow Board members. Do any of you have questions for our ZBA members?
What are your most common projects, resident projects that come before you?
Well, after the ever popular generator, it's usually a portico or someone who's expanding a second story of their house to accommodate a home office or something of that sort. Have you submitted your generator application yet, Lori?
I don't actually know. We don't have, we don't have permanent generator. I suppose I'm a little afraid of the process.
Howard, Harvey, Michael, anything about the process that you'd like to add?
I think it, the Board runs fairly smoothly. I think we're fair. And I, I, I give you a lot of credit, Ken. You run, you run a good, good, good ship.
I would have to agree. I think Ken does a very good job in trying to keep the Board in, in discussing things that are meaningful and trying to give relief to the, the citizens that come before us. Because that's our main job, to give relief from the code.
I don't know, you know, more recently with the Kingfisher application, I know that the applicant expressed some concern that the process took as long as it did. Here was someone who was looking to make this donation of land for the good of the town. Anyone remember any of the specifics of that?
It didn't fit easily into a category that would work quickly. That, that was the problem. They were asking for relief. And it wasn't a, a particular specific thing that fit into any of the code requirements.
I would also say there was a lot of time just spent on parking spaces. Four, six, none, you know, it just seemed to go on and on about parking.
Tom, is there anything you wanted to add about the process, the Board?
Absolutely. Good evening, all. The Kingfisher fit into only an institutional realm, which made it very difficult, which brought us into parking and other requirements that were not applicable. So if we had some sort of way to issue and expand our special use permits to allow use of free space or donation, that would be very helpful and make streamline the process to get us to have someone be willing to donate land. It took a lot just to get them to conform with some sort of institutional classification. And that's the only avenue we had to allow there. You know, there are other ways that we can look at, you know, generators, sheds, patios. Most applicants really object to having to wait the extra meeting for the minutes to be adopted for these on the surface, so installation. So they, they're, they're looking for instant gratification and want to be able to put their generator in right away in hopes of beating the next power outage. So that, that'd be something I'd be looking forward to talking about.
Yeah, those are, those are great suggestions, Tom. I really appreciate that. Maybe we can kind of look at the, the Kingfisher property and, and the sort of case history there as, as an example and kind of unpack that and think about if there's a way that we can create just even kind of guidelines for residents to use when they, when they're interested in making such a donation. That would be, be really interesting. And I certainly think, you know, the generator application process, just simply from a health and safety perspective, that there are ways to, to streamline that, you know, you mentioned having to wait for the adoption of the minutes. I'm, I'm curious whether that's something that, you know, we could figure out a way to, to streamline that there may be, you know, a real sort of benefit to residents of doing so.
What are the, what are generally the zoning requirements that, that require an exception or require review for a generator? Like, what are the circumstances where the generator needs to come before the zoning board?
I think typically you need, people look for variants for their generator. If it's in a side yard setback that, that, or a front yard, it's, it's usually a setback question. And it doesn't, it's always on the side of the property or in an area that is going to be as far away from the house as possible. So that's what creates the problem.
Right. So are there, are there modifications of the plan that the zoning board generally recommends to resolve that? Or, or do all of those applications essentially get approved?
Well, I think what happens is that we look at the, the generator installation in a general sense as to where it's going to be. And the, the questions that are asked of the applicant are, is mainly, why does it have to be in that specific spot? Why can't you move it to a place where it will not require a variance? And the answers that, that lead us to approving the variance are, are many varied ones, but mainly that sometimes technically it can't be relocated because of the connections for its fuel lines and for the electrical, electrical connections in the house or because of other conditions on the property that don't allow it to be put any other place than where it is. So mainly if they can satisfy our, our Board to, to the fact that there is really no suitable location other than what they're really looking for, we always bend to their, bend to their will and approve it unless we can figure out some, some really, really strong reason why not. And that is almost never the case. So we, we are, we try to accommodate where possible, but at the same time, be careful to not just grant willy nilly for something that could have been done in a better way to help the neighbors to be more accepting of it and to make the town better. So it's, it's just, every case is individual and it, there's no really cut and dry answer to as why we would or would not grant or why we would or not put the generator in a, a specific location.
No, I can certainly, I'd love to add to this because I, I experienced the generator application process a few years back. And um, I think, I think what's a challenge for many residents is that their, their expectations, because they think in their head, oh, I'm, I'm installing a generator. I'm doing something good for my house and it should be easy peasy, like one, two, three. And then when they realize that they have to apply for a variance, it becomes a pretty, you know, time consuming process. And so forgive me because I, I haven't applied for anything recently, but are there, I guess I wish there were kind of like best practices or tips of, you know, when you, because ultimately what people do is they hire a contractor to install the generator, a plumber and an electrician. And in my case, I actually think we did have to obtain a variance because we did put on the side of our house. And ultimately it was because we are, we have Con Edison, we have a natural gas hookup. So that was only the real spot that we could actually install it. So as a homeowner, because I'm, just don't have the, you know, the breadth of experience in this and expertise, like I had no idea that it had to be on that side of the house or that, you know, it's preferable to be in the backyard. And so perhaps if there's a way to preemptively tell homeowners, listen, if you're going to apply for a generator, expect this, expect this type of timeline. And if you need to apply for a variance, this is what it's going to take. Because I think that that's where the communication gets lost, is that we're not setting up expectations for our residents. And that's why people feel a little bit, you know, frustrated because they're kind of like, why is it taking so long? Because if I remember correctly, ours did take eight weeks to get approval. So, you know, again, I, I think that like preemptively setting the, the pace and setting the expectations and also setting kind of the guidelines of, okay, if you're in a neighborhood that has these type of houses around you, I mean, if you're on like a five acre lot, you'll be fine. But I, I live in a neighborhood where, you know, I'm on a point five acre piece of property. So that's why I understood why the Zoning Board of Appeals and the variances have to be in place. You have to be very neighborly and mindful of that. So I'm, again, like, I'm, I'm just speaking from experience and I'm not sure what, what critical pieces are in place currently. But that's what I would, I would recommend.
So I, I think your point is well taken, but also re, I'd like to put into that that not just generators, but any, any change or modification or addition or improvement to your property should be somehow passed through the Town Board or, or their, or the building office beforehand, because so many things don't need variances, but they need permits. And if you don't get a permit, then you, you, you create a big problem for yourself later on. But there seems to be some, some, I don't know, I don't want to say it's a lack of, of attention to it because it's, it's difficult to say whose responsibility this is. But we find a lot of people that come to us with decks that have been built, patios put in, even sometimes rooms added on without a permit. And they come to us and say, well, I didn't know I needed a permit. And my builder didn't know I needed a permit. Or, and, and it's not our job to keep people apprised of where, when and why they need permits. But maybe there can be some, some method developed through the Town Board or, or whoever's in control of that to make the, the residents more aware of when permits are required and when they should do, get variances rather than just go ahead and do it. And that, that slows the process down too. And that would, that would help to speed up everyone's determination again.
For, for those after the fact applications, are they, are they generally the homeowner that did the work? Or is it often like a new homeowner who is inheriting the work?
We have had, we have had the homeowners come in who have hired what they thought was reputable contractors to do the work. And the reputable, a reputable contractor will tell the homeowner that they need permits before they can go ahead. Some of them don't. Unfortunately, and I believe, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe legally, whether a contractor does what he's supposed to do or not, the ultimate responsibility is the homeowner. That's what I'm saying. If there's some way that we can make the homeowners more aware of the fact that there, there are processes to be followed and permits to be, to be taken into consideration, that would, that would help everybody, would help the town, it would help us, you know, do, making our job a little bit more, what would I say, more amiable to, to the people's problems. We get people to come up to us that are really, not their fault, but legally it is their fault. And we have to try to resolve this fact that they did something that needs a variance. They should have come to us first. You know, luckily we're all a bunch of nice guys, so we don't, we don't hit them too hard. But we, it's, it would make it easy for more, more so for the homeowner or the applicant than for us, if, if they had a better way of knowing what to do and when to do it.
I think that's a really great recommendation. And I think it's definitely a way that the Town Board can help you guys out. So I think that we can kind of take that back. And Sabrina and Tom, we can kind of circle back with you guys and think about how to more effectively communicate about the sort of what requires a permit and what, what does the process look like? Because, you know, it's a shame that people get kind of thrust in front of you guys and then you're in the position of being the bad guys. Really, it should be us giving better information as a, as a town upfront so that, you know, so that they don't have this unfortunate experience on the backend with you all. So that's great. Thank you.
Eric, you know, is there just, just a, just a thought? Is, is there any value in, you know, a promotion that's kind of like a remediation window? You know, like a forgiveness, forgiveness program or something where you might actually solicit people to, you know, to come forward when you want them to, when it's convenient to? I don't know.
I'm sorry. You know, Lori, a lot of times the rationale for people coming in is because they're selling their home. And that's the point where they become aware of the circumstance through the building department and so forth. And so I, I honestly don't think there are many people who surreptitiously do this work and hope no one notices. I really do think it's people who are uninformed, don't do any research, don't contact the building department, proceed with the work and then only become aware of it when they're selling their home. And, you know, probably every other meeting, we have someone who probably fits into that category.
So, so maybe in terms of a communication thing that could, that the town might be up with, right? Is, are you thinking about selling your home? You know, I don't know whether you, we can offer sort of a recommendation, you know, to people to come and have a building inspector or a, what do you call it?
A title search.
Thanks, or some, I don't, maybe.
We do, we do. We have put out in, 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 you know, other years, you know, in the e-newsletter, in our annual water mailing, you know, recommendation, anybody who comes into our office, you know, indicating that they're going to sell, we, you know, we suggest that they do what's called a title search, which will come up with any differences in their properties from when it was constructed. You know, following a building permit history. And that's where it usually comes out that, oh, the shed's too close to the line or you need a variance for your generator or you finished your basement and it wasn't originally finished. And that's where the zoning board comes into play in correcting some of those things.
I think maybe a, a good point at which to try to educate homeowners is when they acquire the property, when they first buy the building or their home, that, that should be a good time to introduce them to a lot of information that they should have about being a homeowner. We see, when we bought our home, the brokers were much more involved in educating homeowners about the process of ownership. And I think it would be helpful.
Well, maybe Tiffany and Lauren, I'm going to look at the two of you guys and, and maybe we'll, we'll take that back as a to do to think about what information is being included in the sort of newcomers packet that we're sending out and whether we can, you know, sort of add to that with regard to, to building permits and so forth. It's a great suggestion. Thanks.
Catchy slogan never hurts. You know, it's, it's like, I think people have heard it often enough that they don't do excavation work on their property before contacting a utility, for instance. So something along those lines might help.
Right. Well, this is really helpful. I feel like I learned a lot and, and we have some work to do, which is great. Anybody else? Any questions before we, before we wrap up?
Can I interject one, one item?
Absolutely.
And we start looking forward to some of these battery energy storage systems and maybe start thinking about legislation to allowing them or not allowing them. You know, they're going to be forced upon us very quickly. We've had applications for them and we don't have a path really to work with.
Those installed on the interior, Tom, or the exterior of the home?
Both, and they also could be commercial and industrial applications. We do allow battery energy storage systems in combination with solar systems. That's part of the, and as of right installation, and they're small scale of lower kilowatt hours. But we're talking about major companies wanting to tie into the, the grid work to put industrial tractor trailers, if you will, on our properties. And they have inherent fire concerns and setback concerns. So they're not looking for the little small household unit. They're looking for, you know, 15, 20, you know, megawatt units to be placed in a row. We've had.
Did we have somebody approach us about this like a year ago, maybe or two years ago? I'm looking at Nick, but I, no.
There's been applications for this and NYSERDA has put together programs for this. But we have nothing in our code that is, you know, speaking to it. We've introduced a lot more solar requirements, but we have not addressed the battery energy storage systems.
Okay. Well, so maybe that's something that we can, we can take a look at then.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that said, I guess I'll just say thank you all for joining us this evening. It was actually really fun for, for me to get to see all of you in person, sort of on the screen. To see your faces as it goes to just reading your, your names and your minutes and so on. So thanks so much for, for making the time to, to come meet with the Town Board. We really appreciate it.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Good night.
So Rob, I think we've got about 10 minutes before we have to take the break for the public hearing. Do we have enough time to cover any of these items that are on the remaining work session agenda?
Yeah, I think we, I think we do. So we can go through some of the discussion items and, and just see how far we get before the public hearing. So the first item is the authorization to set the public hearing regarding the outdoor dining permits. So So um. That legislation expired. Uh Nick, maybe you can help me exactly when, but I know that that expired and it needs to be renewed and.
Right. So this is around page forty-five of the agenda is the draft of a local law. And this is a continuation of a program that the town board previously authorized to allow outdoor dining in compliance with CDC guidelines, social distancing, government's executive orders. To occur outside and so the liquor authority could issue permits. So as we continue into the spring, we just need to reauthorize the program so that it could continue. Requires a public hearing. No referrals to the county of the planning board who is not affecting zoning. So this will just require a public hearing, which we would suggest you schedule for April sixth.
And can I ask a question about this next from a um? Just, does, is this allowed to continue for as long as we are in a local state of emergency? Or a county or a state state of emergency? Uh like what's, what's the connection between?
This states in paragraph on page one of the local law that be shall be developed until. They did a social distancing requirements are rescinded. So we can, we don't have it tied into an executive order, a local one. We could do that. We could state until social distancing is rescinded or the local emergency order is rescinded.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I'm sort of curious as to how we, what we tied it into because my sense is that even after. Um, you know, some of the social distancing requirements are rescinded. Um, you know, we for a while are probably still going to have um. Restaurant goers uh who would prefer to dine outside as opposed to dining inside, right? So even as the, you know, requirement, e- even as the indoor dining comes back, right? I would still want to be in a position to allow restaurants to have these, you know, special outdoor dining kind of facilities. Um, I, I don't know for how long, but for a while, right?
Yeah, and we don't need necessarily need to tie it into an executive order if you don't, if you want to be as broadly as I think you're suggesting. We could have it until a resolution adopted by the town board eliminating this requirement or something to that effect. So we can draft that language. The thing we need to be mindful of is that to the extent it requires a liquor license permit. The SLA may not allow the liquor to be served outside of the premises. But they could certainly have non-liquor, you know, food and other things outside.
Well, so maybe at a minimum, we can go ahead and make that change to connect it to the state of emergency. Um as opposed to the social distancing requirements, because I think that's a little bit ambiguous in my view. And um like I said, you know, as, as indoor dining starts to lift, is there, is there a gray area there? Um, I think having it connected to the state of emergency is a little bit more concrete in my opinion.
Yep, we can make that change.
I, I mean, alternatively, you could just pick a date. If it, if it expired in November, you could extend it until this November. When it's perhaps seasonally irrelevant again to reconsider in the spring next year.
We, we could do that. We could do that. It's extended until a date certain unless further extended by resolution of the town board or terminated earlier by resolution of the town board. So that way you have the. Discretion to do that.
Third, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Let me, let me work on a couple.
You know, whatever you suggest, I'm not, I, you know, um whatever you think is the appropriate kind of legal mechanism to use to, to do this. You know, my, my concern is just wanting to make sure that we um are giving our restaurateurs and our residents the opportunity to continue with this. For the foreseeable future.
Very good. I understand. So we'll, um, we'll revise and circulate that to the board. And still request that you schedule a public hearing for April sixth.
Um, and, and so are they, are they then not able to?
No, this is a continuation of a program and the, so we're comfortable that.
I think.
Um, that it can continue.
Okay.
So it can be on, okay. So, so, so people could set up tables outside right now if there's a nice day.
Yes, and they previously have obtained a permit from the town. That's the key. If they've obtained a permit from the town, then yes, they can continue to do so. But if they didn't obtain one in the first instance, they have to come into the town to obtain that.
Got it. Thank you.
Let's see, it's five more minutes. Do you want to do the next one?
Yeah, let's do, the, the next two topics are, um, are related. They have to do with the land swap along the, um, Long Northway. Uh where we're proposing to put the chaff line. Um Nick, maybe you want to talk about the parkland alienation first?
Yes, so New York state law allows for a municipality to um sell parkland property or, or convey it, but only if you get state legislation. So in connection with the chaff line, there's a particular portion of property that the town would be proposing to exchange with. The adjacent property owner. And if I can share the screen, I'll put that up on the, on the board. All right, just give me one second. There we go. You should be able to see up on the screen, the map that shows Northway and then property at forty-five Northway. The town would be conveying parcel B, which is uh previously dedicated as parkland in nineteen fifty-one. Was donated for bird sanctuary as part of a much larger parcel that will remain at the bird sanctuary parcel. In exchange with the property owner of forty-five Northway conveying to the town parcel A, which is the backend, if you will, of his property, which is encumbered by the county sewer trunk line. At this portion here. Um the, it would be an even swap of the zero point six zero acres. And this would then allow the trail to continue um across the property of forty-five, the former property forty-five Northway. So to accomplish this land swap, because it's dedicated as parkland, the town is required to get um state approval and the governor to sign the legislation. And um also establish that there's no net loss of, of park space, which is what we've done here is no net loss. The process for this is for the town board to introduce a resolution requesting that the local senator and assembly person introduce legislation. In your packet, which um we can, I can go for in detail, but I think you've looked at it. There's a New York State Department of Parks alienation form that needs to be filled out, that we filled out with assistance of staff. It goes through all the criteria. What's the intended use? What's the current use of a property? How is it going to be ensured there's no net loss of park property? There's also the environmental assessment form because it's subject to SECR. And then there's the proposed legislation. So the first step we'd act the town, ask the town board to take tonight is to adopt a resolution requesting that the legislation be introduced. Once that legislation is introduced, there's then a second step when we come back to the town board and say, aha, they've introduced it. We've read it. It looks good. We'd like them now to. Put it for a vote and for consideration. And then both houses vote on it and then it goes up to the governor for, uh, for signature.
Nick, just for, for clarity, um, when you're looking at this map, the parcel that we would be swapping and gaining, if you will. That, that's adjacent to additional sanctuary land?
That, that is correct. Yes, the, the town owns the land here, which is part of the, uh, the bird sanctuary land.
Okay, so it's not as if we're going to be taking a piece of land that is sort of an island, if you will.
No, that is, that is correct. Yes, that part remains. Yes.
And Nick, just to confirm, if we designate parcel A as parkland.
Mm-hmm.
We would still be able to put a multi-use trail there if we wanted to.
That is correct. The multi-use trail would be for passive recreation purposes and is consistent with parkland. So yes.
Okay.
And likewise consistent on um the bird sanctuary, providing access to the bird sanctuary.
Okay, perfect.
And as discussed last week, the parcel that we would be conveying to the homeowner is not buildable, correct?
That is correct. Given the current zoning, that would not permit. It's a two-acre zoning district, so this would not allow for, it would not be a buildable lot.
So.
And there's also, there's also a drainage easement. There's a um uh town sewer easement here.
And again, they're aware of that, correct?
That is my understanding. Yes, they are. Very good. If there's no more questions, I'll stop sharing screen.
And then the last one right before the public hearing is just uh in order to, to prepare for that land swap, we need a survey for those properties. So um we're just requesting authorization for an RFP uh for those services.
Okay.
So do we need to go to a different link for the public hearing? No, we stay here. Thank you.
Okay. So can we get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
To reopen the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And this is the public hearing regarding the acquisition of two twenty dash two thirty Joan Corwin Way to facilitate the expansion of the existing town highway and DPW Beracha maintenance facility. Sorry. So first of all, I'm just going to ask my colleague Amanda Magana to provide us with an overview of the steps taken last week and uh, and tonight's hearing.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, thanks, Amanda.
Okay, great. Uh, tonight's public hearing regarding the acquisition of portions of two twenty and two thirty Joan Corwin Way. By condemnation is a continuation of the public hearing that was opened on Tuesday, March second. Uh pursuant to the eminent domain procedure law, the town is required to hold a public hearing to discuss the proposed use. And explain its reasons for acquiring the property for the particular public use. Uh document its findings regarding certain factors outlined in the eminent domain procedure law. Since a condemnation proceeding involves a confiscation of property from a property owner for a public purpose. It is important to provide testimony regarding the public use and proposed acquisition that can be used in any subsequent litigation. DPW Commissioner Bart Carey provided testimony at the public hearing on March second regarding the proposed public use and acquisition of the property. Uh for the town's highway and DPW department, including the property's features, reasons for selecting the subject property, alternate locations. And any associated impacts. Before I introduce Commissioner Carey, I would like to provide a quick summary of opposed use and the property to be acquired. As discussed in the last meeting, the town is seeking to acquire portions of two twenty and two thirty Joan Corwin Way. Um, Carey, if you could please pull up the condemnation map. Thank you. Um, so as you can see, uh, it's two lots and this is a um. It's a condemnation map showing how the lots will be redrawn for the public purpose. Um, the one lot contains uh one-story garage, which has high ceilings and has a jib crane and bridge crane installed. This will allow the DPW to store their vehicles and equipment inside as well as fabricate water main repairs. Um, the lots also contain two structures that will be taken down. Uh, one is a um one-story house that's falling apart. And uh to the rear, you can see that there's a cellular tower. Um, as shown on this map, you can see that the town is only acquiring the necessary portions, which would be the one-story garage. And uh we'll leave the rear portion with the cellular tower and the access driveway with the remaining prop, with the uh existing property owner. Uh also, at the last meeting, a member of the public asked why the town cannot use property that the town already owns. Uh Mr. Carey will continue to provide testimony tonight and specifically elaborate on the reasons why the neighboring properties that the town owns cannot be used. Uh to construct the needed garage facilities. In response to the comment, uh Commissioner Carey prepared a supplement to the public use report, which includes maps showing the neighboring properties owned by the town. The geographical features and other limitations that prevent the town from using it um to expand the existing DPW and highway facilities. Uh Carey, if you could please put, pull up the um third page of the supplement, which shows the neighboring. Thank you. So as you can see, to the left is the town's recycling yard and to the right of the subject property is the town's current DPW and uh highway garage facilities. Um, so I'd now like to introduce uh DPW Commissioner Bart Carey to uh further elaborate and identify the features on the map. And discuss the limitations of the existing properties and why the town cannot use them to construct the required facilities. I'd also like to note that the public will also have the opportunity to comment and inquire about the proposed use after Commissioner Carey's presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So just, just to uh recap the, uh, the purpose of, of the condemnation. The Department of Public Works is in need of additional uh garage facilities. We need storage space for trucks outside and inside, inside storage. Especially because it extends the useful life of our equipment and it ensures an efficient response, especially during emergencies. Uh this uh building would allow us also space to maintain the vehicles and as Amanda said, to prefabricate some materials for water main repairs. Having the additional space uh would greatly improve our overall efficiency and safety of operations. It, it came up towards the end of the meeting uh last time about uh possibly building on our existing site. So we uh, I put this together just to follow up and to make sure that we uh fully address that and explore that. So this is one of the, the maps that uh I created. So down at the bottom is the uh recycling center. And that's also home to the parks garage. That's at two ten Joan Corwin Way. Um, so there is a, a parking area, but that is the recycling center itself. So their, a building cannot go there because there's a, there's a parking lot for, for the drop-off recycling center. And there's uh cars that come in there, especially on Saturday. That's uh an extremely busy place. There's also a, an, an impound yard that's up on the hill there um. Towards the, the rear of the property. So you can see by the yellow is a topographic uh lines. And the closer the lines are together, the steeper the property. So our facility. All of Joan Corwin Way, the railroad tracks and the county trunk sewer basically go through this narrow valley corridor. And all of the property extends very steeply up to the Sawmill River Parkway. So. Buildings cannot be put uh to the left of these or what we would call the rear of the property. Um then just to the north of the recycling center and the parks garage is the uh, the parcels two twenty and two thirty Joan Corwin Way. In which we are trying to obtain the, the front portion of those uh properties, which is the, the flatter portion. And to uh leave the cell tower uh portion and the cell tower with the current owner. Just up from there is a space uh that's in between our, our current facility. And in there, there's a, a drop-off yard waste area for the residents. That's a very busy place. And it's, it's something we would actually like to expand um in the spring season. It's a very congested in there. And we've always had requests to uh make more room for additional cars to get in there. We also have a, a stockpile area for aggregates. We have a storage area for salt spreaders that we take off of the trucks. Uh outside of the winter months. And in particular, I know it came up at the meeting, there's a, a fuel uh pump island. And that's for our, our current underground storage tanks. But we are in the process of actually having designs drawn up and we will be going out to bid to replace those. So we will have above-ground uh storage tanks, um which is a much more uh environmentally uh safe means of, of having our petroleum facility. But along with that, we will actually lose uh space as well. So the concrete pad that the tanks will be on is thirty feet by thirty feet. And that will go in the area where it says a new AST above-ground storage tank location, which will be uh right to the south of the existing uh DPW maintenance garage building. So that, that building cannot be uh extended that way because those tanks will be gone there. If we scroll down to the next uh map, I think that shows in more northern part of our facility. So that shows everything we had. And then if you scroll up a little bit, it shows uh, shows further up. So the, the long uh building with a tan roof was the original building that was built in the nineteen fifties. And it was put, you know, in, in a convenient spot through this narrow valley corridor that extends up steeply. Just to north of where that building ends, you'll see there's some trucks parked. And then again, the yellow uh topical lines very close together. That goes up to a steep uh basically rock, rock hill. Um just to the north of that, we have our wash bay that was constructed to wash our trucks. We have brine making uh tanks and vats. And then the large circular structure is our salt storage dome. So you'll also see as we get up towards this end of the property, the blue lines, which is uh, there's streams that run uh in between the parkway. that run in between the parkway and our property and then also in between our property and the railroad tracks. And then as you go further up, there's all the wetlands. So these are all limiting factors as to why we can't add any buildings on the site that we currently have. So also, the the green line that runs in front of all those buildings is the Westchester County sewer trunk line which runs, comes from Mount Kisco, goes down through our property and eventually it goes down to Yonkers. But that's right in front of our existing buildings. So these are all the various reasons as to why we can't expand at our current location and why we're seeking to get this additional property. So in conclusion, the the subject property and facilities adequately address the needs of the DPW in storing vehicles and equipment adjacent to our existing facilities. There are no other suitable facilities nearby. The property and facilities to be acquired will be used in their entirety by the town and there will be little to no impact associated with the acquisition and proposed use. That that concludes my presentation. I don't know if there's any comment from the public or questions from the board.
That was really informative. Thanks, Bart, and thanks, Amanda, as well. That was a great presentation. I really appreciated the the extra insight into the particular properties surrounding these these parcels. So does anyone else on the board have any questions for for Bart?
I don't have a question. I just want to state that it seems to me that you've satisfied, at least for me, the issue of your inability to expand the impact that keeping, for example, these trucks out in the environment has on the longevity of of these of these items that we invest a lot of money in. Explaining all the value here, it's certainly a significant and a necessary one for the town. My ask, though, is not so much for you, Bart, is where are we with the owners of the property, Nick, in terms of their responsiveness? You know, someone was here or a relative was here last time of our call. What's the status with that? Any any feedback from them? Are they are they aware of this tonight?
They are. We've had continued discussions with Mr. Lucchese, who is the executor or administrator, excuse me, of the estate. And they are aware that tonight's hearing was continued. They were given an opportunity. The town administrator spoke with Mr. Lucchese today. Mr. Lucchese advises he's in the process of retaining an attorney. He had had a prior one, but that individual had passed away. And but they've been on notice and he had retained another attorney in the interim as well. So we're we're in discussions with them and we're in the position tonight to close the hearing if the board wishes.
So before we do so, we should just turn and and see whether we have any one who's here this evening to offer public comments or questions for for discussion. So if you're here and would like to make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand. And in the meantime, I will check with Christina and see whether we received any public comments on this issue via email.
We have not. Nope.
Thanks. And Carey, do we have any comments coming in over YouTube?
Nothing on YouTube.
Okay. And I don't see anyone with their hand raised either. So in that case, I will entertain a motion from the board to close the public hearing.
So moved, but actually, we're not keeping it open for any written submission. It's so moved to close it, Nick?
That's correct. It's not required. It's been an opportunity. We've been in communication with the property owner who has wanted interest and they've not requested or and they've made comments in the past. So I'm not seeing the need legally or factually.
All right. So I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Bart, thank you very much. And Amanda, thank you. That was really great. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Bye now.
Okay, we have a couple more things tonight. The next one is the, we're looking for authorization to reestablish the Millwood West End Advisory Board. I guess that has been inactive for quite some time and we're looking to reestablish that. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think Lisa is going to be the liaison to that?
Yes, I am.
Great. And so once we've taken that action, we'll put out a call for for some new members for newly reinstated board.
We have three hopefully identified, but you know, they'll apply and hopefully we get more.
Great.
Okay, the next few have to do with some public works repairs that are necessary. First one is at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. We're looking for authorization to approve the purchase of air compressor repair services. The air compressors used in conjunction with the ozone generator for the disinfection of the water at the water treatment plant. The cost is five thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. This just kind of goes along with, we have this, we have a budget for this. This is just goes along with informing the board of any of the large purchases that are happening right now.
Great.
Okay. The next one is authorization to approve the purchase of installation services for the Flowserve horizontal SLR assembly also at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Costs including labor is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for this repair. Okay, and the final is going to be ongoing repairs for the horizontal grinder at the recycling center. One thing that I'm mentioning that I think we've talked about the horizontal grinder many, many times over the last few years and we know that it's in in pretty bad shape. One thing that we're working on now is getting quotes for alternatives to what do we do? So the horizontal grinder, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair. We would need to replace another machine that goes along with that. The trommel screener, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So basically, it's about a million dollars worth of equipment that needs to be replaced. I did a real quick. If we borrowed the money, you're probably talking seventy to seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars a year in debt service for fifteen years to pay for that. The last several years, we probably spent between twenty and thirty thousand dollars replacing this repairing this machine. So something has to be done with all the yard waste that comes in and, you know, right, right now, machine's still functioning, but needs frequent repairs. So we're looking for authorization to repair this one again.
So that's twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year in repairs?
It has been the last few years. Yep.
When are we going to put this machine out of its misery?
Current repair is about ten thousand, ten, three fifty-one eighty-two.
Yeah. What's what's the expected lifespan of a new piece of equipment?
I think it's about fifteen years. This one has lasted about fifteen years. Early on in the cycle, we had used this, I won't say nonstop night and day, but we used it quite a bit more frequently than we do now. Over the last few years, we've kind of cut back on yard waste. We used to take it from basically from anywhere, from residents, from landscapers, from anything, we would take it in. And we made quite a bit of revenue on it, both taking in the raw product and then turning around and selling the compost and mulch. But we've had a few issues. The dependability of the machine is one and and the residences i- in the vicinity of the machine. It's pretty loud and we've had complaints over the years. So we've kind of, for those couple of reasons, we've kind of slowed down the operation of it and we've been able to prolong the useful life.
Is a new one going to be any quieter?
Don't know the answer to that question. Probably should have left Bart on to give an opinion. I'm not sure. You would think that technology in the last fifteen years has improved somewhat. But I don't have an answer. But we are looking at at different proposals for companies that will either that will come and take it away for us or what it would cost us to remove the product and take it somewhere else.
Grinding doesn't happen at Warburg Park, does it, Rob? Oh, it does.
Yeah, I think that's where the trommel screener is, right? So I think the horizontal grinder, I don't know if I have the right order. One of them takes the the bigger pieces and the other one grinds it into the finer pieces. I'm not sure which order that is, but yeah, I think it does happen at Warburg Park.
Does it? Is it also because of all the storms we've had? This, all the rubbish goes there too?
Right. So we definitely still need this. It isn't just from residents bringing stuff in. A lot of this is the tree work when we have storms and down trees. Our public works has to do something with the branches. So yeah.
How much revenue has it generated?
Like in years past, upwards of two, three hundred thousand dollars, but we've cut that back and it's, I think this year was about fifty thousand in the budget for compost and mulch.
Again, two or three hundred thousand dollars a year when it was running all the time?
Yep.
So it seems like if we can get it up, not necessarily to that maximum amount that annoys the neighbors and is that excessive? We can get significant dollars out of this.
You could definitely, because I think that was what the case was early on when we were taking the raw material from basically anybody that would give it to us. I think there's a need for that. It just, it became a nuisance to the residents.
So what's the what's the next step?
Well, right now, we're just, we're approving the repair, but we're going to ask Mike Sacali to have these quotes ready for us at budget time so we can start to make decisions going forward on what we're going to do. You know, the refuse recycling budget will be interesting this year because we have the carting contract, the Santa Pro contract is up this year. So there will be quite a few moving parts there.
We'd definitely be interested in some, you know, evaluation of or or just report on on what's available, what's changed for making these machines. You know, are there, is there a way that we could run it the way we might like to run it so that it yields the most income for the town?
Okay.
Okay, so I think those were all the items for discussion. We have the administrative items. Payment of claims, adoption of minutes and authorization to approve NCCMC fee.
Okay, can we have the resolutions? Are we ready to go?
All right, so payment of claims, number one. I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail reports all dated March twelfth of this year, checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I move to adopt the March ninth, two thousand twenty-one town board minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to authorize the appointment of the following members to the conservation board for two, for a two, two-year term effective as indicated. Susan Meaney, March sixth, twenty twenty-one. Actually, just Susan Meaney, Lucille Rossi, and Melanie Smith Klein is reflected here in.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to authorize a posting for position of part-time seasonal labor within the Department of Public Works and Park, Public Works and Parks Department.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to authorize the posting for the positions of student interns for various departments to be hired for a period of six weeks with a stipend of fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to accept the resignation retirement of Nicholas Nicholas Olivieri from the position of motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The town would like to thank Nick for his nineteen years of dedicated service.
Second, thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize the posting for the position of motor equipment operator from within the Department of Public Works.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to authorize the payment of a two hundred dollar fee per event to Newcastle Community Media Center for the production of Zoom meetings for town committees, which includes but is not limited to the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee as well as Sustainability Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, NCCMC.
I move to set the public hearing on a proposed law to amend chapter forty-two of the Code of the Town of Newcastle to allow the continuance of issuing outdoor business permits during the COVID nineteen pandemic for April sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M or soon thereafter via video conference, teleconference. Oh, second.
So the next resolution, number ten, is, I'll summarize it. It's a resolution requesting the New York State Legislature to introduce home rule legislation to authorize a discontinuous alienation of parkland located on Northway in the town of Newcastle, as discussed in work session. Their full resolution is set forth in the board's packet. Essentially, you're resolving that the transfer of a property and the request of alienation legislation is in action under secret and you authorize issuance of a negative declaration that you're requesting the New York State Legislature introduce home rule legislation to authorize the town board to alienate zero point six zero acres of town-owned parkland located on Northway and then direct him at all steps necessary to effectuate that, including the acquisition of a property at no value for the swap be be undertaken by the town administrator.
So Nick, should I move?
Yep, and just a motion to adopt resolution number ten.
This resolve is set forth in the packet and described by Nick.
Second.
All in favor?
Great job, Lori. Great job.
I move to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for the following property line surveys for property located at forty-five Northway, a subdivision map for the planning board approval for the same property, a survey to locate the existing Westchester DEF trunk line sanitary sewer manholes and setting of monuments to be prepared by a professional New York State surveyor.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to adopt the following resolutions, whereas the town board wishes to reestablish the Millwood West End Advisory Board and now therefore be resolved that the town board reestablishes the Millwood West End Advisory Board, which will, by the way, advise the town board about programs and events in and issues with Millwood. And it will consist of seven Millwood residents at a term to be set forth by the need to fulfill their duties as herein described. Can we actually make it like a minimum of two and a maximum of seven? Because if we don't get seven, I think the committee's important enough that.
Yeah. And can we also specify it's Millwood and West End residents, not just Millwood?
Maybe it should be a minimum of five. I mean, do you have a committee with two?
Can have a committee with two. I mean, I think it's important to have the committee, so.
Or three, at least so it's odd, so they can have they could three.
Advocate for three.
Yeah, let's go with three.
Okay. Minimum of three. Millwood and West End residents.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Want to continue, Lisa?
Uh, sure. I move to authorize repair services for the air compressor for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant from I Kono Inc. in Bohemian, New York, for the total estimated amount of five thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents to include parts and labor in accordance with estimate number thirty-five forty dated March ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And I authorize the installation of the Flowserve eight L R rotating assembly for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant from Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company, Inc. in Patterson, New Jersey, for the total estimated amount of three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, which includes labor and installment for the rotating assembly as well as the alignment of the pump and motor in accordance with quote dated March third, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize repair services to the Peterson forty-seven hundred horizontal grinder from Barry Equipment in Webster, Massachusetts to replace the discharge belt at the total estimated cost of ten To replace the discharge belt at the total estimated cost of ten thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars. Point, I'm assuming, at is eighty-two. In accordance with estimate number nine, seven, one, nine, two dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeremy, you want to take it home with the last one?
I move to authorize installation of a new security system at Amsterdam Park by Simon Security Systems for the total amount of nine thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and zero cents. In accordance with estimated uh estimate number one, one, four, six dated December twelfth, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So are we, are we adjourning him back to executive or did we finish up with?
We're gonna go back to exec for five minutes.
So I uh move to adjourn.
Second.
And go into executive for uh advice of council and personnel.
Yep, and then noting that the board will adjourn from there without taking any further action.
Great.
So moved.
All in favor?
Carrie, do we need to go back into these?
You want a second, Pat?
I don't care. I don't accept second. Fine, second.
Somebody has to. Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, great. Good night. Goodbye, everybody.